General and the班长
Good morning. Let's first invite the administration in.
欢迎啊，局长
I'd like to welcome the secretary to the PAC meeting for the first time. Welcome Commissioner, I won't introduce them one by one. Let's get started with the discussion on chapter one of report number seventy-four. The deputy chairman, Mr. Lang and Mr. Ho will talk about the Hong Kong Football Association in a moment. I first invite the director of audit to walk us through chapter one of report number seventy-four. The secretary has shared his speech. The bureau's reply to our questions has been tabled, and this is part of Gen Two. After the secretary speaks, I would invite the bureau to walk us through the letter. Since we haven't found the time to go through, go over the letter yet. Director of Audit, thank you. Chairman, thank you for inviting me to speak on report number seventy-four, chapter one, Management of Funding for Sports Development Through the Arts and Sport Development Fund Sports Portion. There are six parts to the audit report. Part one, introduction, introduces the background of the audit work. The sports portion of the Arts and Sport Development Fund or ASDF is the main source of income for sports development in Hong Kong, and there are four main funding areas. First, the Sports Federation and Olympic Committee of Hong Kong, China, or SF and OC and national sports associations and their projects for supporting athletes to prepare for and participate in major international games. Two, projects for hosting international sports events locally by NSAs and sports organizations. C, projects for the development of local football by the Hong Kong Football Association and four other sport programs and initiatives. In twenty eighteen to nineteen, the number of, total number of ASDF projects was one hundred sixty-six with an approved amount of one hundred twenty-three point eight million dollars. The Home Affairs Bureau is responsible for drawing up the relevant sport development policies and managing the ASDF. The LCSD and Home Affairs Department would help vet some of the funding applications and monitor the effectiveness of such projects. Part two of the report explores the funding for Hong Kong athletes to prepare for and participate in international games. In terms of the funding on Hong Kong athletes to prepare for and participate in international games, the audit vetted twenty-eight approved applications and found room for improvement in terms of monitoring the relevant funding. In seven of the applications, no performance targets were drawn up by the grantee. And in twelve cases, some of the performance targets were not reported, and in twenty-four of the cases, there were major variances between the estimated and actual expenditure and or income without explanation from the grantees. In twenty eighteen to nineteen, fifteen percent, fifty percent of the cases did not submit program reports within four months after the conclusion of sports games or preparation programs. And in terms of calculation of unspent balances, there have been errors and delays in refunds. Part three of the report explores the funding of the ASDF on NSAs and sports organizations for local events. The international sports events include the M Mark events, major local international events, and local international events. The audit found that some in the ten international sports events examined, one was not properly assessed. In terms of the reporting of performances, there was room for improvement. In twenty eighteen to nineteen, seventy-eight percent of the cases experienced delays in submission of program reports and auditor accounts for MLIEs, and the LCSD did not compile inspection reports after examining some of the events, and information is missing in some inspection reports, for example, spectatorship. The audit also found that unspent balances only has to be returned for M Mark events, and the all the surpluses would have to be refunded. For LIEs and MLIEs, only the unspent balances would have to be returned. And for some projects, after auditor accounts are submitted to the LCSD, a long time was needed to return the unspent balance. And the accuracy of the HAB's report to Legco is also found wanting. Part four examines the ASDF support on football development. The HFA is responsible for developing football in Hong Kong and operating the Hong Kong Football Team. The audit found that the governance and human resources management of the HFA should be improved. Between the football seasons twenty fourteen, fifteen to twenty eighteen to nineteen, the attendance rates of some members were less than fifty percent, and none of the members made the first tier declaration in terms of recruitment. Some of the applications were only received after the deadline or that they were not addressed to specified recipients. However, some of the applications were still processed, and the relevant candidates were hired. The declaration of interest in recruitment work could also be improved. In terms of attendances of games in the twenty eighteen to nineteen, fourteen point six percent of the attendance held complimentary tickets while the gate receipts and sponsorship income fell from one point six eight and two point one one or twenty-one point one million dollars respectively from twenty fourteen to fifteen to four point six million and four point five million dollars respectively in twenty seventeen to eighteen. According to the funding agreement between the HAB and HFA, the HFA must report the performance targets and indicators every half a year. Between twenty fifteen to sixteen to twenty eighteen to nineteen, two to eleven of the projects failed to meet the relevant targets and indicators as of September twenty nineteen. The Football Development Consultancy Report published in twenty nineteen, the targets were yet to be met in September last year. And in some cases, the achievements were even worse than that achieved in two thousand nine. Part five of the report explores funding for other sports programs and schemes. The audit found that in the five-year deva- sport development program of the twelve teams that took part in the twenty eighteen Asian Games, nine did not meet the performance targets under the district football scheme in the funding period between twenty fourteen to fifteen to twenty eighteen to nineteen. And the eighteen district football teams failed to meet all four performance indicators, and ten of them did not provide any explanation. Paragraph six of the report explores the governance of the Sports Commission and its three underpinning committees. The Sports Commission provides advice to the Home Affairs Bureau on the sport development strategy and funding of Hong Kong. The audit found that the SE and its three underpinning committees, in terms of the number of meetings and attendance by members, there is room for improvement. From twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, thirty-two members did not attend any meeting at all. The audit also found that for some members who attended SE meetings, they did not sufficiently declare potential conflicts of interest. In light of the above audit results, the Audit Commission provided recommendations to the HAB and LCSD, and they were accepted. I'd like to thank the HAB, HAD, LCSD, SF and OC and NSAs for their cooperation during the audit period and for offering assistance and responses. Thank you. I now invite the secretary to speak. Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I welcome the hearing held by the Public Accounts Committee so that we can address the improvement suggestions on the management of funding for sports development through the Arts and Sport Development Fund Sports Portion. To facilitate the subsequent discussions by the PAC, I'd like to first offer some background. The sports portion of the ASDF has always been a key sources of funds for sport development in Hong Kong. Through the fund, the HAB provides funding to different sports projects in order to popularize sport, promote its elite development, and promote mega events. The fund has been in operation since nineteen ninety-seven, and it has been used to support training received by athletes overseas and on the mainland to prepare for games and to take part in major international or national competitions, including the Olympics, Asian Games, and the National Games. Through the fund, the government encourages NSAs to bring more international sports events to Hong Kong so that the public can enjoy sports events locally. Through funding from the ASDF in the past years, more than one hundred and thirty international sports events of different scales were held in Hong Kong, including some popular events, including the Hong Kong Marathon, the so- the football friendly game between Kitchi and Manchester City, as well as the the world jogging competition held on Victoria Harbour. The second and third parts of the audit report examine the funding for athletes in terms of preparation and participation in international competitions. The audit report offered improvement suggestions on the management and operation of the fund, including ensuring the timely submission of program reports and auditor accounts by grantees. Establishing and recording targets for events held overseas or locally and requiring grantees to return the balances in a timely manner. The HAB and LCSD have followed up immediately, and by the end of June, the relevant review of procedures and modifications to guidelines will be completed based on the suggestions. In order to facilitate sport development, the HAB has been promoting pilot schemes based on the views of stakeholders and actual needs. Part five of the audit report review the effectiveness of three programs, including the District Football Funding Scheme launched in two thousand eleven. The scheme for para- for disabled games or athletes, as well as the five-year program for team sports, which was launched in twenty eighteen. We are happy that these two programs have performed well, and they have been made regular to be paid by the governments with current funding. Team sports have always been popular to the public, especially young people and students. Team sports can build discipline, teamwork, as well as sense of cooperation. But the development of team sports require more resources and venues. As a whole, the performance of indi- of athletes in individual sports is better than those for team sports. In order to promote team sports, in January twenty eighteen, the HAB launched a five-year program for team sports, and one hundred and thirty million dollars has been earmarked in the fund to provide extra funding for eight team-based projects in the Asian Games with a goal of improving the results for these for these sports and to improve the prospects of elite sport projects in the future. In the past, these sports were seldom able to take part in major competitions, and even if in participation, their performances were not optimal. After the implementation of the program, after seven months of training, three teams achieved target results or target goals in the twenty eighteen Asian Games, including the men's baseball team, the men's handball team, and the women's hockey team. With the support from the scheme, systematic training has been established for eight team-based sports, and there were more opportunities for overseas exchange and competitions. In terms of fitness, sports science, and sport medicine, team sport athletes were able to receive better support. Even though the scheme has only been been implemented for two years, we believe they have helped to improve the standards of team-based sports. We will continue to liaise with various sport teams to help enhance their levels. The government will only, will also continue to support the development of handicapped athletes in Hong Kong so that they can achieve better internationally. Since December twenty seventeen, the HAB has set up a full-time athlete system for para-athletes, and through the Hong Kong Sports Institute, complete elite sport training has been provided. In recent years, many countries and areas have been actively developing para-athletes, which led to much higher participation. So in reviewing the funding effectiveness of the relevant schemes, we cannot, we cannot just look at the number of medals won in the Paralympics and Asian Paragames. Part six of the report offered governance suggestions for the Sports Commission and its subcommittees. The standing orders of the SE have not been updated for years, and this is something we would review. If modifications are warranted, they would be done. The SE and its committees had an attendance rate of more than seventy percent on average in the past five years. Last year, the attendance rates were lower because meetings had to be rescheduled due to the social movement. Very often, members could not attend meetings.
So we will adopt measures to allow them to attend meetings. We'll also arrange for video conferencing so members can participate remotely, and will improve attendance. In March this year, we have proactively reminded members to declare potential conflict of interest, and we will also review the declaration of interest mechanism. So in summary, in management of the Arts and Sports Development Fund Sports Portion, we adopt a cautious approach to ensure that resources are used cautiously. So the recipients of the funding will receive the appropriate assistance. We thank the Audit Commission, allowing us to review our operations more carefully, and it is of great benefit to our work. So my colleagues and I are willing to answer any questions that you might have. LCSD, Chairman, members. First of all, I need to thank the Audit Commission. Regarding the ASDF Sports Portion, they have conducted a value-for-money audit and made a lot of suggestions to allow us to improve. Also need to thank Legco PAC, the Public Accounts Committee, allowing us an opportunity to explain our LS- LCSD work. So the ASDF Fund Sports Portion is a major funding source. The ASDF supports many sports. LCSD being one of the executive departments of the HAB, we comply with HAB principles in approving the funding applications for the ASDF. This include, one, supporting NSA's, supporting athletes for in preparing for international competition, and second, we support NSA's and sports institutions to host international competitions to promote sport development in Hong Kong. In the last five years, the ASDF have supported more than seventeen hundred sports events. Now as sports takes a bigger role and the public develop a greater interest, we believe that there will be more opportunities for hosting events, and local athletes will have more opportunities in participating at a high level of games. So we are also responsible for the development of sports in the society. LCSD agrees with chapter seventy-four of the report regarding the ASDF in approving funding applications. So we agree the applicants need to report their accounting and other areas. There is room for improvement. We need to step up governance. So we have held a work report with HAB to review our existing operation and look at the improvement measures. So we will implement these measures as soon as possible. For example, we will require NSA's when they submit funding applications, they need to report their uh, they need to report their sports goals and initiatives. If they don't meet their criteria, we will examine the reasons. We will also look at why there is a shortfall in performance. We'll also look at the financial reporting. We will be working with HAB to review the community sports meeting rules of procedure. So this work has already been under underway, and some of the work is already taken immediate effect. So by the end of June, we will complete the relevant review work as suggested by the audit report, and we will fully implement these measures. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. Secretary and Commissioner, could you explain? Last night, we received a letter dated fifteenth of May. We don't have, we didn't have time to read the letter, so could you take us through the letter? There is a figure that we need to clarify with you. Yesterday, we issued a letter regarding ASDF. The fund investment and return on investment, so we have some figures here. In the document, it mentions the ASDF received one hundred sixty million in the sports section, but in the table, I want to mention in nineteen ninety-seven, that rule, the sports and arts section, they should be switched over. It should be one hundred sixty million for arts and one hundred forty million for sports. So when we, there are mechanisms for vetting the Football Association, so that is detailed in the paper. In the past, we have, we've described the five-year plan, the goals, the results, outcomes. So in the afternoon, we can have more interaction on these topics. So this paper on the fifteenth of May, this will be labeled Gen Two. It will be included in our documents. So first speaker today would be Deputy Chairman. You can, let's give us some background. Good morning, everybody. Today, we're looking at chapter on Arts and Sports Development Fund. So let's take a look at a macro picture. So let's look at diagram one. The diagram one it's on page eleven in Chinese version. I'll give you some time to get to the page. There's a bar chart, and we see in the last five years the fun on expenditure on sports section. So let me give you some idea. So you know what, how much money we spent on each section. So if you look at Hong Kong athletes' preparation for and participation in international games and funding for sports events, in the last three years, the percentage makes up some, more than seventy percent, between seventy and seventy-six percent of the budget. So colleagues are concerned about chapter four, sports, football, the Football Association. So the funding is not so much, but the significance is nonetheless very significant. So in the introduction, I don't have too many questions, but I want to follow up on the fifteenth of May letter. Page two of the letter, paragraph one, says in the last five years, the return on investment is some eight hundred ninety million. This is return on investment. So I want to clarify with you this fund, who is managing it? Do you just have a general reserve? Do you let Monetary Authority MA manage it for you? Thank you. Thank you, Secretary. So Sports Commissioner, you can, this one. This is handled by the Treasury, and they also are responsible for investment. The Treasury, the fund is one of the sub-funds under the David Trench Fund, and Treasury is responsible. And the David Trench Fund, they have a investment committee. They provide counsel to the fund managers. So my understanding is the David Trench, they have a trustee. They have commissioned a fund manager. Is my understanding correct, Commissioner? That is the, handled by the Treasury. So aside from David Trench Fund, they also manage other funds on behalf of the government. So let's ask the Audit Commission. So the Treasury, do they also manage it? So let's ask the Audit Commission. So the the Treasury, do they also manage it? Well, if that's the case, I would need to take a look at it. FSTB. Chairman, on uh in this report, we didn't focus on that. We understand the Treasury. Uh it manages many funds. It uh they have an investment committee. And uh we're also auditor for many of the funds. Uh they are operating smoothly. FSTB, nothing to add. Well. If we have any supplementary information, uh the Treasury might have a a huge workload. You're investing. That's not the focus of this chapter, but on return on the investment, that is important. We have expenditure and return. Th- these are important. So the audit and Treasury, uh maybe you can provide supplementary information. Uh so we can have a closer look at the fund. Thank you. So in the introduction, I won't be spending, I won't be asking too much. Because I would like to jump to part one regarding Hong Kong athletes' preparation and participation in international games and their uh and their funding assistance. So I want to focus on the project management. That is, we after they've been funded, they are spending money. How do we receive the unspent balance? And the audit. Uh paragraphs two point five talks about the management and monitoring. So you have two reports that you need to um submit. There's a program report and an audited account. In paragraph two point six A, it says the government wants to encourage the grantees to submit these reports in a timely fashion. That is the program report and audit account. So you have a penalty system. If they're late in submission by more than a month, by every month. That then it's one percent of the grant money will be uh the penalty. So if they're late by one month, when do, when does uh, when do you start calculating the late date? Well, if you it starts from the seventh month. Well, this penalty system, when was it implemented and after implementation? Have you ever enforced the rule? They've, they've all been enforced. You can confirm that? Do uh Secretary, if you have enforced it, you have to tell us how you've enforced it. Because our report will, has described your, your your execution hasn't been that comprehensive. Well, after the report, uh they have to submit the reports uh and uh within four months and for the fin- uh financial audits, they have to be submitted within six months. We have always urged them to be, to make timely reports in the past. The late reports have been penalized one percent. We have implemented this rule and some late submissions, uh we do allow flexibility. So it doesn't mean that all late reports are penalized. So Audit Commissioner. Uh yours, eh do you conduct sample testing or do you test all uh NSA's? If you refer to paragraph two point one seven. We mentioned, they have to submit uh within four months, but they ultimately have a six-month uh deadline. We can levy a one percent fee and we see uh a lot of cases, they have not been charged a levy. So what is the actual situation? We don't know. Some have been charged the penalty and some have not. So have you been very stringent in your uh enforcement or have you been uh lax in your enforcement? Because we need them to submit reports uh punctually. Two point one seven. To enforce this rule. Uh they have to submit for their uh reports in four months and we also remind them every six months. So why do we have two separate reporting dates? Because a lot of sports events, uh they take time to do audit work and we note that in the past their scale and uh because of the scale, they need time to collect data and some, even some sponsors don't provide financial or numerical data uh in a timely manner. So that's why you see some need more than four months or even six months to compile the reports because the execution and implementation of sports events, competitions. They do need more time. But I said just now, we do have a mechanism. If they have not submitted a report in six months, then by the seventh month, they will be levied one percent uh penalty. So some cases, we need a bit more flexibility. The majority uh of NSA's comply with our requirements. Commissioner. In the last few years, there were six cases where they were not levied the one percent uh a- after the uh the deadline. Uh they were only late uh by a small margin. They submitted the report in the seventh or eighth month. They were late, but it wasn't uh very late, so we exempt, exempted them. What do you mean by a lot? So they submitted everything within eight months. So in paragraph two point one seven, could you tell us uh where you've exercised discretion? You can provide more details and we can look into that. Because the secretary in his letter that he read out in the funding agreement. It states very clearly that they need to meet your condition. The condition does, did not say you are, you have very wide discretionary powers. So you need to give us an explanation. This is uh a review of governance. We do have a lot of these bodies that are under your supervision and a lot of money is at stake. Yes, I heard some discretionary uh powers and I want to know. Is it frontline staff exercising discretion or is it the Commissioner yourself? Who, which level of management is exercising discretion? You know, you said for large projects or programs. Maybe you should set the deadline for seven months rather than six months. Because if you don't comply with regulations, we would be very concerned. Chairman. We have a secretariat uh beneath the HAB. They are responsible. Sometimes we have cases.
Sometimes the responsible organizations um need a bit more time and they may see a delay in their program reporting. Would you like to supplement? Oh, there's a case that we were responsible for. We checked with our staff and followed up on the case and they returned the money. So what money are you talking about? The penalty? Or are you talking about the one percent? Yes, the one percent penalty. And that involves a forty thousand dollars and we were able to get it back. Can you actually supplement this part with a written response and explain each circumstance and how you exercise your discretion? Any follow-up on this? Or let me continue on to another topic, performance target. Performance target. Well, this is a bit abstract. You provide grant for athletes to prepare and participate in international games. Do you have a basic guideline on your objectives? Well, let me use something I'm familiar with as my example, swimming. Do you set an objective of the athlete getting a gold medal or just uh being able to be qualified for the finals or just setting a personal best time? What is the objective? Do you have some basic guidelines for that? So this is under paragraph two point seven. Well, allow me to explain a bit. Well, for attaining medals, that's more close to the objective for elite athletes. Elite athletes would need to comply with certain objectives. If you look at the ASDF. I would like to share with you some of our background uh principles. We hope athletes and potential athletes could participate in more competitions and gain experience. Our athletes not only train locally. It's a very good opportunity for them to train overseas and to gain more competing experience. We cannot just set um um getting a medal as an objective, as that would actually deter the athletes. We hope that athletes in Hong Kong can participate not only in local competitions and they can also learn from overseas experiences. With accumulated experience, they'll be able to prepare better for other games. In paragraph two point eight, we uh did explain a bit our principle. We hope to send Hong Kong athletes to participate in international games. Well, I understand there is a dilemma to set performance targets. You also support elite athletes, right? Let's say elite athletes uh go to the Asian Games and you would also include the elite athletes in your funding. Am I correct? Commissioner. The elite athletes who train in the Hong Kong Sports Institute will be funded under the Elite Athlete Fund. Well, for the funding under ASDF, there will be other athletes, not the elite athletes. Oh, uh let's say we go to major international games such as the Olympics or the Asian Games, then they would be organized by the um S F and O C. As long as they are able to be qualified, then it will be under this funding. All right. You, here you set a performance target. What is it? A bit too abstract then? I don't know what the performance uh target for each game would be. If I look at A, B, C, then some of them have not reached the performance targets. Do you really have to set a performance target? Well, let's say you set a target for training, then you can require the athlete to attend one hundred percent. Even if you're not an elite athlete, can you require the athlete to achieve a personal best time? I'm not sure how you set your performance targets. Do the athletes set their own targets? Because if I look at two point seven, it seems that, it seems very target. It could actually be non-existent. It doesn't matter if you do not achieve it and it doesn't matter if you cannot explain it. Can you try to elaborate? Uh Chairman, there are like a twenty um under the um elite games, Hong Kong Sports Institute to get would set targets uh for the athletes. But it is not under the ASDF. The ASDF will also support um some individual games uh to help the athlete qualify for the games. However, sometimes it's difficult to set a huge objective for international games. Well, let's say we are going to go for the um national games. Uh when they are applying, they do not know who their competitors are. I don't know uh what kind of athletes would be sent out by other places. So you would need to look at the different circumstances. You wouldn't know until the games are opened. Oh, it's difficult for them to set a performance target at the time of application. Uh however, if you want to look at attendance rate or attain a personal best, and these are some criteria that we can consider. Oh, understood. Well, I I understand this is a dilemma. Uh performance target is already something quite debatable and it's really difficult to monitor. What I hear right now is uh these are not athletes who have attained elite athlete level. Now how can you strike a balance between the argument? I'd like to hear a response from the Director of Audit. Thank you, Chairman. Well, we look at good practices and the criteria they set. If I could refer you to two point five A. The program report asks for achievements against performance targets. In other words. We will look at the program report. And look at the the projected achievements of athletes. So when you're vetting the application, you would look at this as a benchmark to see whether the application would be approved. We see that uh targets have not been set in some of the reports. And for others, um there is not a yardstick to really measure the achievement. And for others, um, there is not a yardstick to really measure the achievements. Oh, as they are the experts and they know it's difficult to set benchmarks. And they need to think about how they can improve this in the future. Well, there may be a few people applying for the E D funding. But whether you award it to A, B, or C, then you would need to consider the preparation fund. And if you do not have a benchmark to measure, then there might be favoritism involved. We do want to understand how you measure and approve the funding and how you enforce it. Oh, that is a reason why Mr. Kenneth Leng is asking all these questions. Uh, Chairman, actually, it's a bit complicated. The ASDF um funds team sports. When they comply with the application criteria, then we would consider. We wouldn't give uh, we wouldn't grant A the funding and not to B. And actually, many athletes are already under the elite athlete scheme at the Hong Kong Sports Institute. And under H A B, there is around three hundred million supporting our athletes. For many individual events, um, they are either under the um NSA's or the um Hong Kong Sports Institute. So uh, for uh, those who come to apply for the ASDF, they are usually team sports. Uh, we, our expenses is around one hundred million. But Hong Kong Sports Institute um uses around uh, seven hundred million a year. This is very different. Well, I understand the difficulties. However, I hope that applicants, even if um it's difficult to quantify the performance targets. I hope that um, they can state clearly in their report and also try to set out some measurable performance targets. Uh, can we now go over to two paragraph two point ten? There you can see expenditure and income. I see many applicants. When they submit their applications, it, there are significant variances between the estimated and actual amounts of expenditure in the final report. Um, if, may I refer you to table six? Um, you can see all the figures on the variances. The variances exceed twenty-five percent both in expenditure and income. Um, Director of Audit, how do we set this variation of twenty-five percent? Thank you, Chairman. Well, over twenty-five percent signifies a huge variance. The pers- the variance or the percentage may be high, but the amount may not be high. I think the auditors need to take this into consideration when you are looking at the numbers. I want to ask whether there is policy to request the applicants when they see such huge variances. Let's say in the original application, they're asking for a hundred thousand dollar in expenditure. Well, I I'm not sure. Well, let's say they use more than one hundred thousand, then of course you're not gonna pay extra. Am I correct? That is my understanding. Uh, the estimate they provide to you is one hundred thousand, yet they spend two hundred thousand. That's the first scenario. How would you, how would they handle this? Commissioner. Well, why is there a twenty-five percent variance? Uh, let me try to explain. Very often, when they apply for funding to prepare and participate in games, they would uh, give a larger estimation. Because if they think that they can qualify for the finals, of course, they hope that they were able to compete till the end. And of course, there would um be a rough estimate of expenditure. Sometimes, however, um, they may already be disqualified after the first round. And they may not use that much money. However, if they already uh, know uh, which round they might be able to um, get past, they can give a better estimate. Um, none of these um, applications actually will exceed this expenditure. Because of course, when you apply for funding, you hope that you'll be able to get to the finals. Um, if you're already disqualified after the first round, you don't need to spend as much. So this is how you come to see such a huge variance between the estimation and the actual expenditure. Well, let me supplement. Uh, the estimated expenditure uh, uh, for um hotel accommodation and plane tickets. Um, they usually uh, give a a a rough estimate, usually a larger estimate. They may be able to get discounts. Um, actually, so this happens that they don't spend as much as they originally estimated. Well, I understand. For uh, the larger variations of around thirty percent to forty percent, I hope that uh, you would also come up with internal guidelines and to ask the applicants to set out black and white on the reasons of such huge variances. Well, I understand that um, this may be the usual reason. But then we want to see these reasons written down. Otherwise, five years later, when you're audited once again, uh, we still see the same variances and we don't know the reasons for that. Well, I'd like to spend a few more minutes. Well, he hasn't actually answered your question on on whether you would uh, give them um, extra money. No, we do not do that. It would not exceed the estimated amount. Well, I'd like to spend a few more minutes because I would like to wrap up this part. In paragraph two point one two, in relation to auditor's report, there are few scenarios listed. Auditors may not be clear about what they are doing. Because the audited, uh, the audited opinions um would also refer to procurement requirements and the code of conduct. When the applicants engage the auditors to submit a audit report, do the auditors understand what the requirements and code of conduct are? Have you stated to the auditors clearly that it, the report must include procurement requirements and the code of conduct? Have you ever given there any guidelines? Otherwise, uh, why would there be so many different scenarios listed here? Uh, these auditors pro bono. No, that's not a, that's not a reason, Chairman.
I'm just wondering whether that's the case. The deputy chairman asked about the um letter of understanding signed where you request audit reports. And these organizations must explain the case to the auditors. Do they offer such explanation? Or seek to learn more about your various requirements? Currently, there are no requirements for the auditor's report to explain whether the grantees comply with the procurement requirements or code of conduct. But um, having heard the view of the P A C, we find this a worthwhile practice. So um, in our new guidelines or code, we would require NSA's and their auditors to report these two aspects to ensure that the grantees comply with the procurement requirements and code of conduct. Secretary, I don't quite understand this answer. This is a civil service requirement when it comes to procurement practice. And this is also a W T O requirement. For any grantee, this should be taken for granted. You should realize that um, we are talking about the civil service for the letter you read out in gen two. This is an implied requirement, right, Director? Or did I not understand what you said? Um, Chairman, you are very right. When NSA's and grantees apply for grants, there would be a funding agreement and the agreement stipulates that they must comply with our code of conduct, including accounting standards and procurement requirements. But when we inform the grantees, we did not explicitly state that the auditor's reports must include these aspects. Chairman, we have subvention agreements that grantees must comply with in the past. We did not ask auditors to um expressly state these areas. So in the future, we would explain this to the NSA's clearly. They do comply with the requirements already. But very often, they do not know that um, this must be stated in the auditor's reports. Do the um, auditors often um work on a pro bono basis from what you understand? NSA's have a budget to engage an independent auditor. I'd like to ask about table ten. This is about the unspent balances. There were long delays before you received the funds or sums. When you receive the program reports and audit reports, what does the workflow look like? Who would be doing the vetting? In table ten, we see that some of the applications, for example, application one, a letter was only issued nine point eight months later. So why could this really take so long? In some cases, it is as long as fourteen months. I think this is unfathomable. It took so long for letters to be issued. Uh, whether um, you you would be supported by the Treasury? Or are you looking at the audit reports or audited accounts as a layman? In terms of the um time for submitting reports, very often the applications or projects are complicated and larger in scale. We are talking about the time lapse since the receipt of the audited reports or the audited accounts. We had to vet the audited accounts. So sometimes there would be delays. Director? After the audit report was issued or the, after the audited accounts were compiled, we had to cross-check the balances to be unspent. Very often, um, there could be disagreements over eligible items with the NSA's. So very often, um, we would go back and forth with the accounts before we can confirm. If there are variances, then um, they would have to um, update the accounts. That's why a longer time is often needed. Kenneth? Which staff are responsible for such exercise? Do you have seconded staff from the Treasury? These are staff in our department. I'd like to um, see a sample of the audited accounts and program re- report. Perhaps um, you can produce samples from application number four? You can um, redact the relevant details. We do not know on which case the applications refer to, so we have to find out. Director of Audit? We will work with the um, department on this. We would like a sample of the subvention agreement on application number four. Stephen? Thank you. The deputy chairman um, asked a number of questions already. I'd like to know how much staff in the S A L government engage in audit. I'd like to know whether there's a lack of manpower in face of the audited accounts received. Whether it is a district badminton competition, um, there would be penalties. Well, right now, you are spending the same amount of time vetting competitions of different scale. Is is this reasonable? There should be different vetting standards. Thank you. Under the current mechanism, there is no difference. Some applications would require a longer time to vet. because there are certain challenges in terms of operation. Based on the audit recommendations, we would see how this can be clarified in the future. And we will try to shorten the turnaround time. And for applicants to know better what they need to prepare, that way, we can avoid disagreements or misunderstandings. In terms of manpower, I would defer to the LCSD. Director? Well, I believe the Home Affairs Bureau should answer this question as well. Are the applications only vetted by the LCSD? They are vetted by both the LCSD and the Bureau, depending on the project. At the LCSD, there would be two teams responsible for sport with about twenty staff. But they do, they are responsible not just for vetting, but also to promote sports. So vetting only makes up a small portion of their work. Is it, is the same team responsible for vetting and examining the auditor accounts? Yes. The team has other areas of work as well, but it is the same team. As Director of Leisure and Cultural Services, do you find the workload reasonable? I'm not an accountant. This is very complex work. Well, when it comes to a beach volleyball competition in Brazil, do you have enough manpower and budget? We engage in vetting. And certain standards would be applied to applications before we decide how we approve the funds or whether we approve the application. Director? You can look at Application Four. And eleven months left before the grantee was asked to return four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And like Mr. Ho said, does this point to a lack of manpower or has the work been too slow? For Application Three, six point eight months, and the amount of return was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Well, there would be interest rate or interest implications if the sums were returned late. So these are some of the examples. I agree with what the chairman said. The team for vetting and the team for checking the audited accounts should be different. That should not be the same team. You should appoint one to two staff to deal with the vetting. Is this adequate? The most challenging part is the vetting. Are you referring to the auditing? That is conducted by auditors when reports are submitted. We would check them against the eligible items in our approval. And whether there is any difference with the sum return. And that would be done in-house, and we have enough manpower. Are there records in the communication between the government and applicants? Or is it that the applicants delay the return of the sums on purpose? If there are different views on certain items, we might have emails or other forms of correspondence. Please produce a relevant correspondence for Application Four so that we can know what those disagreements were. Thank you. That was a very good question. Sometimes, there were longer delays. And we would seek to minimize disagreements earlier on. With better communication, the likelihood for, the likelihood of problems would be minimized. For some applications, the time needed was relatively long. Like the director said, we have enough manpower. So if manpower is not the problem, then we have to identify where the issue lies. Like I said, if there are disagreements, they should be clarified as soon as possible. If there are still disagreements at the end, then it's a different issue altogether. We agree with many of the recommendations, and we will examine our practice going forward. I agree with the secretary, but I hope you understand my question. Sometimes accidents and disagreements are inevitable. What is more important is to show the public that you are correct. From Table Ten alone, I don't see how much communication have you conducted with the applicants, whether you have held focus groups. Sometimes the applicants might have to fetch receipts from overseas organizations, and sometimes there would be accidents. If you explain the issue clearly, then the audit commission would be satisfied. Is there such mechanism currently? In terms of tendering? The director said that the auditor's report does not state the number of quotations and tenders received. Doesn't mean that you have no records at all? Whether they have met their requirements or whether they have done it? How can you tell? And which level of staff would monitor this area? We have established workflow for different arrangements. We do realize that certain records should be clarified, and we should do a better job in communication. That way, we can save time. And in some areas, we should do a better job of oversight. Secretary? The deputy chairman asked questions about guidelines. And the question asked by Mr. Ho was also relevant. And under two point two seven, more guidelines would be drawn up by the government.
Please bear in mind that there is a logic to our questions. We, then you can identify why there is a delay. Is it because of manpower? Is it because of your guidelines are unclear? And Mr. Ho is asking, do you know where the problem lies? Is it manpower? I agree, Chairman. You see, we have been able to describe the content of different cases. We are grasping the situation. Is it manpower? Is it the guideline? If I weren't able to describe these, you would be concerned that maybe I am not on top of the situation. Now, I've just given some individual examples. We do have to look at our overall procedure. So allow. Yes, we are given the impression. And that is only an impression. Oh, it, we don't know whether you are aware of what is going on. Yes, transparency and communication are important. If we don't give a good explanation, the impression isn't that good. So before the commissioner answers, I'd like the secretary and commissioner to have clear communication because in Application Four of the table, he wasn't able to respond, but his counterpart was able to give us the details. So you've given us the big picture, that is the secretary's responsibility. I don't want to give the public the impression that the two of you are not on the same page. Let me clarify. Every year, we receive many applications. So the typical issues, such as the commissioner saying, why does it take more time? And we're not referring to these four examples. In the past, we have many examples. So that's why we're able to tell you what the issue is. And you were reminding us, and we were not referring to Application Four. Yes, we do wish that, let's say, in Application Four, we don't want to dig into the details, but you should be familiar with the case. We shouldn't be asking you what the name of the applicant is. We have spent a lot of time on this paper, so you should be able to answer us. Yes, that is correct. Even though I haven't taken a post very long, I am able to answer your questions. Thank you, Chairman. Regarding NSAs, whether they have complied with our guidelines, LCSD has an audit team. They will check to see whether NSAs have complied with our regulations, and they conduct, they conduct an audit. And of course, they cannot check every case. But if we require the auditor to compile a report regarding a particular project, and we have to check whether they have complied, we think that is a good guideline. But the daily operations of NSAs, we have to rely on our mechanism. Yes, I hope you understand the issue. So moving back to Application One. So we have money returned. And we still have, money is not returned. So from D to H, from twenty first of March twenty eighteen to first to twenty second of January twenty nineteen, the amount of unspent balances returned, who can answer? Now, if I'm not clear, my colleagues can supplement my understanding. All the money has been returned. D E F G H has been returned. We're checking that. You can clarify that first. We can come back to this later. You just need to answer the facts. You don't need to answer right now. It's been more than half a year. I just want to know what the latest situation is. So I want to know if action will be taken after the audit report. Yes, I will check on it and respond. Well, I think the government needs to do a better job here. Then we do have some NSAs that took more than eighteen months to return unspent balances. So I want to clarify once more. What is the deadline for returning unspent balance? What is the most extreme case? Is it one and a half years? So have they still not returned the money after two years? And what has the SAR government done in between? How many meetings have you held? How many emails have you sent to reclaim the funds? Let me respond to D E F G H. Yes, we've collected all the money. So Sports Commissioner could respond to the other question. Chairman? You are referring to Case One A. Case One. Items D to H. Page twenty eight, Chinese version. The extreme case, it's one and a half years. So I don't know what, when was the latest sum that was returned? And in the interim, the SAR government and the applicants, how many times have you issued invoices asking for them to return funds? Well, for Items D to H, we have already received all the money. Basically, through the, throughout the process, we are in contact regularly with them. The NSA also makes an explanation. They need to, we need to settle different opinions. What kind of opinions are you talking about? Is it that, that they are tight on money, on tight on funds, and they can't pay up? So what is their response? There are two principles here. You have an agreement. They need to refund in four months. And then if they are late by month, there's a one percent surcharge. So you have a framework. You need to collect funds. You had your responsibility. In this respect, we have a few cases. It's the same applicant. So E to H is the same applicant. So we have been in constant contact with them, and they did not respond proactively. In our guidelines now, we don't have further penalties. So in our review, we'll see what we can do. Okay, I understand. So the Sports Commissioner, you said they had feedback, and then you delayed action. So what was their response? And their response might not be reasonable. So what actions did you take? Did you write them a warning letter? Did you issue them? Did you engage lawyers? Their explanation was they need the time. And of course, we felt that was not reasonable. We issued many warning letters to collect funds. And as I said, in our existing guidelines, so unspent balances, there is no penalty. So A B C, is it the same applicant? So A B C, D E F G H are the same applicant, yes. So in twenty seventeen, you granted the money. But when they paid back, they were already late. So when they made applications for D E F G H, did you take into account their previous record? Was that part of your consideration? You lent them money. You knew that you would have to write it off, that it was going to be a bad loan. And who was in charge? That it was going to be a bad loan and who was in charge? The there was the same applicant and they were late on all eight occasions. Uh they started from twenty seventeen and. They submitted the project in twenty seventeen and only paid back in twenty nineteen, why do you still lend them money? For example, uh item H. Yes, that is not ideal at the time, in twenty seventeen eighteen. We were. Collecting uh funds from them. At the same time, our fund. We want to support athletes competing overseas. We don't want to deprive athletes uh an opportunity to compete overseas and. We did not, because of that, uh. Withhold funds. Or that 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 is a. That is quite a. A bullying attitude. So that is a governance problem, your process, your mechanism. Uh are you powerless? Well, Commissioner, you need to understand. We are looking at at from a value for money and governance perspective. You ha- have so many, so much funds that. It is within your control, I understand you want to encourage athletes. But you also need to comply with the government requirements. Uh allow me to explain, Chairman. Your concern is loud and clear. The constraints uh are. There's not much we can do under the guidelines. Uh it's like. Uh we don't have a credit rating, we cannot put them on a blacklist, it's not ideal. Similarly, we want to balance, uh we want to support our athletes in overseas competitions. So as we said. We need to. Comply with our guidelines, we need to review the mechanism to see. Uh whether there is room for improvement to avoid uh your concerns. Uh the public might also wonder why it takes so long for them to return money. We don't want to this uh recidivism to continue. Thank you, Chairman. I'm not totally rejecting your. Comments. Uh you do come to Ledgeco for funding. But you're telling us that you cannot supervise them, so this is the problem we're facing. This situation of. Delinquency of late payment, will this continue? Well, let's let's have the the Commissioner respond. Chairman, we are reviewing the mechanism. We don't have a penalty mechanism. In the past, our consideration was to let athletes compete overseas. In the future, we are reviewing the guidelines and we'd like to. Add some penalties. So if they don't return the balance, we can consider. Uh how we handle future applications. Well, since you've responded, let me ask at this right now. In their delinquent payments, can you penalize them? Not the one percent uh surcharge. N- none, not under the current mechanism. This. Root, these rules were set in twenty fifteen and there is no penalty. So the one percent. The one percent surcharge is for late submissions, it's for late reports. Yes, for late reports. But for late unspent balance, there is no penalty. You will consider. Uh fine tuning that. We. We want to look forward and. W- when we ask these questions, it helps you understand where there are shortfalls and how to improve. Just now you said that in paragraph two point two seven, you promised the audit commissioner to improve this, improve that. So now we're helping you. Isolate your problems. Going back to table six. The variances in income and expenditure of twenty four applications. Uh the figures range from hundred twenty five thousand to five point four million. Uh the discrepancy is thirty to eighty seven percent. The extreme example of eighty seven percent, just now. The secretary said that uh they were expecting the team to enter the semifinals. So. Do all the applicants expect to uh get into the semi-final rounds and or how many are? Are already. Uh or 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 do teams um? Exit after the first round and uh they but they've already made hotel bookings and they can't get a refund, so. We have the the law, a five point four million figure uh and could you give us more details? I don't have the percentage figures and uh the detailed sums, I'll have to check. Well. You've already had this report a long time. You have uh many discussions with Audit Commission. So when we ask you questions, you should have all this information on hand. You, yes, please go back and uh look at, look up the figures. So why do I ask this question? So if a lot of applicants say that they will enter the semi-final rounds. Uh in the funding mechanism, shouldn't you that be adjusted? Uh you have to make funding based on realistic expectations. But if they all say they are are go- are 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 going to be the champions. They will be holding on to the money for a long time, so have you looked at these app, these cases, did that happen? Do you, are you lack uh lax in your funding application? Or or are most teams uh already out of the competition in the first round? Well, there are many other reasons, of course. How do we deal with funding applications? We need to consider the applicant. If you give them money in phases, if they are short of money in the middle of the round. Uh they can't book hotels anywhere, then they need accommodation. So we give them sufficient funding. So they can participate in the event without worries. So looking at the the different scenarios. How can we fine tune the procedure? The Audit Commission has given us suggestions and we can look at. What can be done to fine tune the process? Well, table six. It doesn't show me. Uh whether it is a provincial competition, a national or regional competition, so. Uh there's no information that we can glean from this figure, especially for the five point four million. Uh uh figure, you need to give us uh some details to. You can uh redact the name of the applicant. Yes, we can provide this information, thank you. Okay?
Well, I've asked around thirty minutes, so let me just follow up a bit on the page twenty one. About two point seven. Uh just now, a question has been asked for room for improvement in setting and measuring performance targets. As C and D are a bit clear. Saying that there are two applications, the grant, the grantees failed to achieve all or some of the performance targets. But there is no evidence indicating that H A B and L C S D have taken any follow-up actions, therefore I have two questions. First. Of course, there is a reason for the Audit Commission to. Write the sentence in this way, or do you have? I'm not sure whether this can really reflect the reality, because we don't know who's being the ultimate. Who's has the ultimate responsibility here. Uh perhaps you can first. Answer part C and then D. Commissioner. The NSA's. Or other sports organizations would set their own targets in their report and then afterwards they would need to support their report. For those that have already set targets. Uh they would then also uh mention. Their achievements when. We're not going to monitor the games or go. Monitor the training overseas. It's really up to the performance of the athletes. Well, since we've already granted them funding, uh we would see uh how much money they have spent. So what we do here mainly is to see whether the money spent complies with our requirements. We cannot instruct them to achieve anything. Or reach any targets, we are just monitoring how the money is spent. The performance results are. Not under this ambit. So why do they need to submit a report? Well, they will let us know why they need to prepare for these games and. What kind of achievements they hope to attain from that. Well, I don't think this is a very ideal situation. Well, some can put on their applications that they want to become the world best. But can they really achieve such results? Uh do you need them to attain a certain number of medals? Uh whether they get medals or whether. Or if you're not asking them to get medals or achieve certain result, I don't think you need them to submit a report. Well, for C. This is just a preparation for the games. About two hundred forty hours of training. Well, look at paragraph C. Or can you try to elaborate on C? Because this is the question, because here you said that two of the athletes. Uh would go into the semifinals, so. Therefore, uh I'm just targeting on the performance, well, but for paragraph C, it's not on performance, it's on the program reports. Did they really complete two hundred forty hours of training? Well, even if they didn't reach two hundred forty hours of training, then they need to. Uh also report it back to you. The two hundred forty hours of training uh would depend on whether they are receiving our grants. If they receive the grants. From us, then they would need to submit a report on whether these targets have been achieved, well, but exactly, that's what they haven't mentioned. Well, no, actually, uh we could see that from the report, what can explain to the Director of Audit then, or Director of Audit? Can you try to elaborate on paragraph C, two point seven C? Here it was expected that two athletes would enter the top sixteen of the competition and also two hundred forty hours of training. Provided to the athletes, but there was no mentioning in the report or whether these targets have been achieved. Uh Chairman. And the pla- applicant would put down their performance targets when they submitted a report. But as Mister Chu said, it's very difficult to. Ah to ask for a good results. And we believe that the government should also monitor whether the targets have been met. We're not asking for medals, but at least you need to tell us how many. Of training hours have been provided, because you're asking for money to prepare for games. We understand that the government cannot monitor all the hours of training, but at least it must be put down in the report. Well, if you are looking for two hundred forty hours of training, then you would need to explain. Whether this has been achieved. Oh yes, we just want to see whether these hours have been achieved. Oh, it's just a simple question. Or I perhaps need to explain better. Members ask whether you would get a gold medal, very often. When applicants put down. Information that uh would give them more credit or merit. Uh actually, we wouldn't consider it, because we would question whether these could actually be attained. This kind of communication is actually very important. Uh if we know that those performance targets cannot be achieved, that they're too unattainable, then of course we would question it. I'd like to clarify that. If you don't require them to put it down, then it's a bit redundant to ask them to submit a program report. Uh we don't want there to be any misand- misunderstanding. Well, so you need to make it clear in the future that there are certain basic requirements, let's say two hundred forty hours of training. Uh you need to list how many athletes. Are involved and how many hours of training you, they would be provided, that would be the basic requirements. I see in bracket D. That the grantees failed to achieve all or some of the performance targets, but I don't understand what kind of performance targets you are referring to here. So can you tell us what you mean by they didn't achieve all of the or some of the performance targets, but have they actually? Complied with the basic requirements. Commissioner. The A S D F uh mainly supports team sports in competing in international games. As long as the level of a games. Comply with our basic requirements. Then we would uh grant them funding, we don't need them to achieve world best. Well, we are not talking about this. Uh they are representing Hong Kong, it doesn't matter if they win or lose, but have they actually attained the? Preparation target or training target as mentioned in the report. Though they can't just say that, oh, they will get a gold medal. We are talking about the spirit of the games. The Audit Commission has been very clear about the performance targets under two point seven C and D. Uh Chairman. The two hundred forty hours is set by the applicants. We look for the expenses that listed out in their program report. It doesn't matter whether they are providing two hundred forty hours of training or two hundred sixty hours of training, then you shouldn't put it down then. Well. Any applicant submitting a application for funding. Or let's say I want to go into the top eight. So what would I need to do to achieve that target? I would need to be a good athlete to go through two hundred forty hours of training, that's a basic requirement, or Mister. Or or Mister Young. Let's say uh you want to achieve a certain target, then you would need two hundred forty hours of training. Well, and the you would grant them funding if they are to go for two hundred forty hours of training, right? Or Deputy Chair. The Deputy Chair mentioned how you can achieve it and what has been achieved. You see, we are asking the questions step by step. We want to see whether the two hundred forty hours have been achieved, because it is listed very clearly in C. Please try to explain to us, because I get more and more confused here. I think we have a communication issue here, because I need to write up a report. Chairman, let me try to explain. We do not specify what kind of achievements the applicants need to attain. Usually, the applicants would write down their own. Uh uh targets, and then we would see whether it complies with. Our requirements. Uh for example, if they are going for international games, how many athletes they are sending out. How much money they would need to pay for the coach, et cetera. Well, I understand. So why do you need to put down two hundred forty hours of training? Well, this is actually not. Our standard. Well, then why did you have to put it down as a guideline? This is not our guideline. No, you can't allow them to write down two hundred forty hours then, because you're. You're encouraging them to do something by pay, giving them money. Well, this is not uh some kind of. Um sports day. We're talking about international games here. Well, you can just write down, well, we are only part for, we are only. Trying to participate. You don't need to achieve any targets. What I see in the report that is listed very clearly that C. At that in C, there are two um high achieving athletes that would enter the top sixteen of the competition. And then they would need two hundred forty hours of training. Or if you don't think that is a guideline, then you shouldn't put it down. Or in two point two seven, you ask for clear guidelines, otherwise there would still be. A problem. Uh Chairman, two hundred forty hours is not a guideline. It is not our requirement. Uh some, these are the hours put down by the applicants. They can put down two hundred forty hours, two hundred fifty hours. We have never required them to. Um specify the number of hours. It's different to participate in international and world games than in local games. Uh Commissioner, I'm not going to argue with you. Let me read out that paragraph. For example.
Top sixteen of the competition and and two hundred and forty hours of sports. Physical and psychological training would be provided to the athletes. There was no mentioning in the program report whether the targets have been achieved.
So this lists out very clearly the target and you agree to it. Are you understanding my point? Yes, I understand. So we shouldn't put down redundant. Stuff. No, let me try to explain. That's not the point. Well, here you said top sixteen. Let's not talk about this. The problem is when you are applying for funding. It's and you said that you need two hundred forty hours of sports, physical and psychological training, and that takes money, right? If I want to hire a psychologist, a sports coach, I would need to spend money. So we want to see whether this money has been used to support the recruitment of these trainers. I'm not sure or I cannot see from the report whether you have really hired these people. You need to separate your targets and your basic requirements. Is it clear in your report that the money has been spent on that? Do you understand? In your report, you agreed with all the recommendations given by the Audit Commission. But now you, but now you say that uh this is not a requirement. So you shouldn't have allowed or agreed with the recommendations given by the Audit Commission. You have to understand, Commissioner, that we are only reading the report. Or unless you have. Explained to the Audit Commission that this is not a requirement. Do you understand my point? Well, yes, we can continue to argue. Uh you can try to convince us. Are you saying that there is something wrong or an error in the report? And if there. That is such a case, why did you agree with the recommendation subsequently? Chairman. Well, I don't think the wording is clear. The target is to be in the top sixteen, but the two hundred forty hours of training should. Actually be a foundation and not exactly a requirement. So I hope to hear an explanation from you. Chairman, let me use a follow up C as an example. This is a very good example. We need them to tell us their estimated target. But then targets are can be different. Let's say C, they want to enter the top sixteen of the competition, but this is very abstract. Whether they can really attain this result is not clear. But the two hundred forty hours of training. Is linked up to how much money would be granted. So we need this sort of performance target to support us in our grants. Our requirement currently is just the performance target. There is right now no follow up action on unattainable targets. Perhaps if they cannot go up to the top rounds. We do not have those requirements. Well, let's say I am overweight. I want to diet. And cut down fifty pounds and I tell you that I'm going to stop eating. And I need to go into camp with a with a trainer. I asked for your funding. I did. Uh and join a camp. I also hired a trainer, yet I didn't do anything after I entered camp. Well, you have explained it very clearly. So you have to set very clearly what is a target, what is a requirement. You're actually putting these two together. It's not very clear in the report your targets. You need to set up a guideline, because in two point two seven, you said very clearly that you would set out guidelines for the program reports. We are trying to go through the report step by step and we are revolving around the same topic in the past two hours. And now suddenly you are saying that this is not a requirement. Or if that's not a requirement, then you shouldn't allow them to put this down, because it would seem that they have already. Committed themselves to providing these hours of training. Oh, yes, I agree. I I just want you to know our requirements, because it would be unfair to your colleagues. You are not the one in charge of that, but it's your staff who need to. Look at the report sixteen months later. Am I clear?
Athletes in Hong Kong have a very difficult job. The funds are supposed to help them achieve. But um we are not trying to set certain um hard um requirements on the funding. We want to train our athletes so that they can achieve better. We are granting funds for participation. Can you explain part D? Can you explain or provide more information on part D? You explained part C already. What about part D? What have you done? Chairman. For the remaining two applications under part D. The grantees failed to achieve all or some of the performance targets and the situation is similar to C. Basically, we do not. Require applicants to come up with targets. Um these are applications in which targets are set by themselves, yet um. There was or no, no result was reported. C refers to participants. Who did not mention whether targets have been achieved. I think you should do a better job in monitoring. The century wrote clearly in Gen two. About the government's monitoring responsibility. These could be long term targets. We shall take a fifteen minute break. When we come back, I'd like to wrap up this session before we move on to part three. Alright, so we should have have a ten minute break.